Good evening. Welcome to B News Live Election Coverage 2025. This is April 5th. We'll be going through all of the results tonight, and we have some of the candidates have stopped by for a chat. If I add it up right, by the way, this is the 36th straight year of coverage.
Wow.
Thought I'd point that out. There's only one major election on the main ballot. That's for Planning Board. We have three candidates for two five-year positions. There are also two questions, and we'll probably start with those. So let's get right into it. Question one, Chris, you want to talk about that?
Right. So the results are still being finalized for the questions, but it seems like both question one and question two were overwhelmingly no. So question one was whether to change the town clerk position from an elected to an appointed position. The reason behind that was longtime town clerk Amy Warfield, as we know, is retiring after 19 years. So it seems like the town is going to keep it elected.
Okay. And question two, what did, do you want to talk about that a little?
Oh, I'll talk about question two. Question two was to whether or not the town should reconsider the ban on recreational marijuana dispensaries. That was a non-binding question, and the question has sort of been making its rounds through the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals, General Bylaw Review Committee. Sorry, the zoning bylaw review committee. Thank you. It's been a long day for me too, friends. And so the Select Board ultimately decided to put it on the ballot for this year to see what the town thinks. In 2017, the town said, no, we do not want to have cannabis dispensaries. This year, the town also said, no, we do not want to have cannabis dispensaries. And it seems like the margin is actually even bigger this year than it was in 2017.
Oh, wow. All right. I guess we're still getting the results for the ballot. Is that right?
Yes, they should be coming in shortly.
So we'll start, we have a talk here. We have Nick Priest has stopped by, and we'll talk to you for a little while.
Yeah. Hi, everybody.
How you doing, Nick?
Hey, Nick.
Good.
Okay, Chris, you have the one to start?
So how's it feel to be returning to the Select Board for another term?
Yeah, you know, it's funny when folks have been asking the question, like, oh, you're running uncontested. It must be nice, right? And I say, it's always good to be challenged during a campaign, right? We want that diversity of thought and opinion. But you know, when you have the opportunity to run uncontested, it gives you a chance to actually think about what you want to do in your next term, right? Which I think is fantastic. So I'm looking forward to the next three years.
And what is it that you want to, what you want to do in your next term, since you've had so much time to think about it?
I have. Three months, right? To put into thought. No, look at it. It's carrying forward a lot of things that we've been working on, right? It's moving forward with the communications research that takes us toward the notion of a communications officer, which we're bringing forward to Town Meeting in May. It's about, you know, making sure that economic development stays strong, especially in these trying times, right? And it's about making sure that, you know, we're doing our best as elected officials to be out in the community, hearing from people, right? So I've committed to the community that at least once a quarter, I'll be making an effort to hold town halls, so we can be talking about things and trying to keep people informed in a very grassroots kind of way.
What are some of your proudest accomplishments of your last two terms?
Honestly, I always say that term one was mired in the pandemic, right? But being able to, you know, manage through that and not, you know, be wildly reactive while, you know, maintaining services and protecting the community was a huge, you know, part of term one. Term two, getting the communications report put together and drafted was fantastic. And I think over those six years, you know, I really talk about, you know, how important economic development was and bringing on the role of the Economic Development Director. Melissa Tantakalos has been nothing but fantastic in that role and making sure that we are being proactive and forward-thinking.
And this year, we have a government review committee that's coming up soon. What are you excited about for this committee, if anything?
Honestly, this is everything, right? I think that, you know, everything we do in life and in local government needs to be what we call a living, breathing document, right? We need to be able to take the opportunity to review how we function, right? Not just to look for efficiencies, but to make sure that everything is codified the way that we want it to be and clear, right? And so I think like taking the opportunity and the time to do this over the next 12 to 18 months is going to be fantastic. And we're going to have the Collins Center with us as an advisory capacity. And I think that it's going to, whether it does nothing other than say, we want to keep things where they are and it's codified, or we've got some opportunities for recommended changes, I think it's going to be great to take this time to do it. And I think that if nothing else, every, you know, 15 years, we should do something like it.
Important question. Do you and Micah Spahill carpool to meetings?
We don't. We should, because we live on the same street for crying out loud. You know, but between having to get kids in different places and, you know, then get ourselves some meetings, we don't. So, you know, if anything, we are not being environmentally conscious in that regard.
We'll follow up with him on that later.
Absolutely.
Nick Priest, thanks so much for being here. Any final words?
No, I appreciate everyone who really voted. I appreciate everyone who came out in the bad weather today. You know, if nothing else, right, you know, it's our civic duty and responsibility to get out and vote. So I really do appreciate everyone, you know, slogging through the weather. But, you know, nothing else from me. I appreciate you guys having me here tonight.
Awesome. Thanks very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right. As I said earlier, there was one race on the main ballot. That was for Planning Board. There are two five-year term seats available. We had three candidates. None of them was an incumbent. Jeremy Harrington, a current member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Jack Kelly, Precinct Seven Town Meeting Member, and previously served on the board for several years. And Gregory Ryan, a Town Meeting Member for Precinct One. Do we have some results?
We do. So I'm just going to go over this. We have question one.
Planning Board.
Planning Board, right here.
All right. So Planning Board, we've got Jeremy Harrington comes in with 1,748 votes. Just ahead of him, Greg Ryan with 1,872. And then Jack Kelly falls a little bit behind with 1,430 votes. So our new Planning Board members are going to be Jeremy Harrington and Greg Ryan, and they'll be taking the place of Ernie Covino and Bill Gaffney, who are both retiring after many, many years on the Planning Board.
42 years for, well, 36 for Ernie on Planning Board, and then 42 overall, just as public service.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, that's a nice segue, because Jeremy Harrington has just joined us.
Congrats, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Nikki, you want to start us off?
Sure. So, I mean, let's just get your thoughts. You just found out that you won your seat here. What are you thinking?
You know, I'm really happy. So thank you. I mean, I know I've, you know, I'm a new candidate. I've spoken from the heart. I've done some work in the town government before, but thank you all for the votes. You know, it feels very good that my message was received well, and people believe in me.
Jeremy, it'll be time for you to say goodbye to Zoning Board of Appeals. How has your time been with that board for a few years?
Awesome. Awesome. I really learned a lot, and that kind of jump-started some of how I wanted to do more in town. You know, I really learned a lot about how the zoning has impacted individual buildings, be it commercial or residential, and gotten a good feel for the ramifications of the decisions. So, you know, I'll be sad to go. I like working with the other board members, but I feel that, you know, this is my next step to really help make an impact in town.
Excellent.
And you mentioned you're a new candidate, and you're relatively new to Town Meeting as well, right? When did you join Town Meeting?
About three years ago.
About three years ago, yeah.
I had a failed bid and then a successful bid to join Town Meeting.
So I think, you know, there are people on the ballot today who may also have not had the results that they wanted. What advice do you have for new incoming candidates who, you know, didn't, weren't successful on their first time around?
So, you know, I always wanted to be part of town government. I was an American History major in my undergrad. It's always been very important to me. And so my first instinct when I lost my first attempt at Town Meeting felt a bit like a gut punch, but something that I found was, in going through the process, I met a lot of people, and I found a community that I didn't know was there. And so, you know, my experience was leveraging that community to find the right place to serve on a committee or board and be able to get more engaged with town government, and then use that to move forward.
And what are you looking forward to with your first term with the Planning Board?
Well, I love to learn. So I know I've got a lot to learn. I know I'm coming with my own perspective. I know I'm going to be listening to residents and blending those to try and drive things forward. But, you know, I'm looking at learning and trying to help continue to move the town in the right direction.
Excellent.
All right. Any final words for viewers?
For those out there, thank you for your support. I will continue to share my opinions, and I want people to reach out to me. You know, I have a perspective, but I want to make sure I take more in than just me, and try and help, you know, continue moving our town forward and making it a great place to live.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I mentioned that there was one
Contested.
One contested race on the main ballot, but we also had contested races in the various precincts. Precinct One, we had seven candidates for the six seats. Precinct Three, we had seven for six. Precinct Six, we had eight candidates for the six positions. And Precinct Seven, we had seven as well. And we will get to those. We might have to work on those a little bit to figure out who's on.
Yeah. A lot of required reading, but we have our next guest and our newest town clerk.
Our newest town clerk.
Jennifer Priest.
Hi.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
How's it feel to be starting this new position?
Very excited.
And you've been shadowing a little bit, right, recently?
I've done some shadowing with Amy. We've been touching base. Kind of, she's been answering questions. She's been very helpful. I've shadowed some of the processes with this town election, where, you know, they did the early processing. I stood in the hallway. They did their thing in the room. So I have a good grasp of those pieces. I'm excited. There's a lot more to learn, and I'm looking forward to learning all that.
Awesome. Both you and your husband Nick now are public servants, setting a great example for your kids. Why do you think it's important for residents of all ages to be involved in town government, public service?
Giving back to the community is a big piece for us. I think also instilling that civic duty in the kids is great. We have interesting voter turnout for local elections, and I feel like some of that stems from how people were educated about it. And for myself, I know the education around that piece in my hometown was not great. I definitely got more involved in college, and I learned a lot more about elections and pieces like that and getting involved. But if the education piece isn't there, and people don't realize how much this matters and how much it affects their everyday lives, they kind of get lost in the shuffle. And I think that is why we get these lower numbers at this time of the, on the local election over the national elections.
So you're, we found out today, you're probably going to need to be running another campaign in a year.
I will be seeing you guys next year.
Lovely. This is usually a five-year role, but this was a one-year position that was on the ballot this year, because our town clerk is retiring after filling four of her five years. So you've got one year to get up and running. Be in that role and then campaign one more time.
I'm hoping we get beautiful weather instead of the bone-chilling cold that we had today for all the candidates that were standing up there.
Not my favorite election weather, but I feel like it's every single year that this happens.
More years than not. I would say we've done a couple as a family and supporting other members in the community. I want to say we haven't had a nice one in a couple of years, so hopefully next year will be the year we get.
Or do, is what you're saying.
A nice, warm, put-the-sunscream-on election. Knock on wood, if there's any in here.
Anything you're looking forward to in the next year?
I'm really excited to kind of get into the nitty-gritty of it and really jump in and start doing the, there's a lot of trainings and conferences with the Municipal Town Clerk Association to get that piece running, because it takes three years to get your certification. So I want to really get that piece really started. And I think that's why, at some point in time, the decision was to make this a five-year seat, was because there is a long, a good amount of time before you can get your certification. You have a lot of educational pieces to work on, so.
Awesome. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you for having me.
Congratulations.
The floor is yours if you want to shout out anyone, thank anyone.
I want to thank my family, actually. They've kind of taken the brunt of election season a couple of times for different family members, but having two in the household was a lot. And I appreciate all of the support from everybody in the community.
Thank you, Jen. Congratulations.
All right. Do we know what the turnout was? It's kind of a crummy day out there, but I think it was pretty high compared to what it's been the last few years. What did we have?
It looks like we had an 18.6% turnout, which Nikki, I don't know how that factors in from previous years.
Last year was 22.
Last year was 22. There were some hot contests on last year's ballot. So for an uncontested, relatively uncontested year, it's a little bit higher than average. Usually it's about 15% in the last about five years, except last year. So, you know, and about half of those, this is important, about half of those ballots were cast before today.
Yeah. It's hard to compare now, because things have changed.
Yeah, things have changed. More access, I think, has helped people, you know, vote in their own way and a way that works for them. And, you know, it turned out that over 1,600 people came today to the high school.
Excellent. Well, we have our next guest, Mike Spahill. Welcome.
Hello.
Mike, how are you? How does it feel to be starting a new term?
It feels great. I'm doing great. I'm very excited to start my second term on the Select Board. And thank you to the voters who voted for me. It's a great honor to serve on the Select Board. And congratulations to all the winners and everyone who threw their hat into the ring or decided to run for town government. It's not easy to put your name out there and commit like this. And I think anyone that was on the ballot today should be commended.
What are you, what are you looking forward to doing in these last three, in these next three years?
Very excited. We've got big plans. I'm excited. Finally, we have room, hopefully room in the budget for Communications Director, and that's coming up for Town Meeting in May. And we'll be talking about that, hopefully persuading Town Meeting. And I think communicating, I mean, that's kind of like the key to life, right? Communicating, talking, getting the word out. And I think as a town, it's one of the places where we've struggled. And I, credit to Nick Priest, this was something he ran on and has been pushing for. And he pushed for the Collins Center study in 2022. And we just up until now have never had the room and the budget for it. Some will argue that we never do, but this year, town administration finally found some room. We've had some, a decrease in headcount in a few places. And we've waited and waited, and after the Collins Center report in 2022, we finally have an opening where we think we can get it in. So very excited for that. I'm very excited for Government Review. I think taking a look at our government, what we do well, codifying that, and also taking a look at what we could do better and try and improve. Anything that you're a part of you want to try and improve. Very excited for the police station, and very interested to see what happens with the high school. I'd like to see a new high school in town. I've wanted that for a long time. So I'm not, not someone we'll be directly involved with, but we will be kind of on the sidelines, sort of. So lots and lots to look forward to.
Yeah.
I know your foster son was out there with you today, holding signs. What do you hope he learns from the example you set, not just today, but your continued involvement and dedication to our town and public service?
Yeah, thanks for mentioning Rhodey. It's been a life change. I've had, I don't know, most people know, I have adopted a young boy, and he's a sixth grader at Marshall Simons, and I've had him for nine months. And it's been tough. It's been, being a single parent is tough, and I had to cut back on a lot of things I was doing here in town, except pretty much the Select Board. And I think it was very valuable, the lessons that he's learned in this short election, even though it wasn't an opposed one of, why are you doing this? Why do you go to these meetings? And just to give back to your community? And why put so much time and effort and heart and soul into this? Even out there with the signs today, I was collecting the signs, and it was raining. And he said, I don't want you to go out and get the signs. I don't want to get them. Like, he was just like, I think he's starting to get it. And he goes, you know, I don't want to see you get sick. You know, you've got a lot of things to do, and you've got a new term to look forward to. So I think he's starting to get the grasp of it, and he got a kick out of the whole process. And it's been a wonderful addition to my life and a piece of my life that was missing. And bringing along a kid that needed a chance, it's just been, it's been a great part, great, great thing.
It's great.
Great. Any final words? Anybody you'd like to thank today?
Yes. I'd like to thank BCAT for hosting this tonight and keeping us so well-informed in the buzz. Your election coverage was excellent in breaking down all the candidates. I'd like to thank my family for being so supportive. A few of my friends who have been so helpful with my campaign, Rachel, Joe Marie, Ally, just invaluable whenever I have a question. My fellow board members, I think as a board, we work together so well. And it's been a pleasure to be on that board with that team. And I'd like to actually give shout-outs to Ernie Covino, who's going to be leaving us. And Ernie actually taught me how to be a politician, not a politician, an elected official. We're not politicians. And he took me under his wing when I was elected to the Planning Board in 2019. And also, a shout-out to our outgoing Town Administrator, Paulo Sagarino, who will be leaving us in May. Paul kind of taught me how to be a Select Board Member. And Paul has talked me off the ledge many a time when I storm into his offices, saying, why do we do this? Why is this like this? And he's been a steady, calm voice of reason. And I'm thankful for both of them. And it's unfortunate that within a month, we're going to be losing them both. So it's a time of change for Burlington, and we've got a lot of transitions. But I'm excited for the next three years. I'm excited for all the good things going on here. New police station, we're building a Fox Hill. I'm excited for the town. And even though these are kind of, seems like tumultuous waters we're in right now, we have such a great town and such a charitable, altruistic town with great people and committed people in our town government, it's just a pleasure to live here and be a part of town government, be a small piece of the great thing that's Burlington, Mass.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Don't forget to carpool with Nick to meetings.
Well, in addition to the, in addition to the contested races, of course, there are several other races on the ballot as well. Town Clerk and Moderator, two seats on the Select Board. Assessor, School Committee, we had two seats there. Library Trustees, we had two seats. Board of Health, two seats. Constable, two seats. And Recreation Commission, one seat. Those numbers, they're all unopposed, so the numbers will be on BCAT during the evening. And we have another guest to come in.
Yes.
Jack.
The only contested townwide race.
Right.
That's right.
The only contested townwide.
And I didn't figure out how to win.
Well, welcome, Jack Kelly. You were running for Planning Board this year. You had stepped back, and it was 2019, right?
2019, yeah.
And now you're trying to come back?
I was bored. Nothing to do.
Yes, it does get kind of boring.
Yes, yeah.
So, you know, you didn't make it this time. What are your, what are your feelings, thoughts today?
Two people were leaving. You know, I wasn't going to run against any of the incumbents. You know, I think they're all good people. So, but this was an opening. I said, fine, give it a try. And it was a good race. I want to thank both Jeremy and Greg. You know, I think we all acted professionally. And, you know, the town was lucky. They had three people who could fill a job. And so, that's it. I'm still a Town Meeting Member. I can cause trouble anywhere with this planning board or town.
And you have a reputation for doing just that, Mr. Kelly.
Well, I don't have a verbal filter. I say what I think. And I sometimes ask tough questions, and it's not the questions, the problem people have. It's the answer, it's their answer they have a problem with sometimes.
You have been a regular fixture around town, and you served both with Ernie and Bill on the Planning Board during your time. What was it like to work with both of them?
Oh, great guys. It's a seven-member board. We don't agree 100% all the time on some of the issues, but for the most part, it's unanimous votes. Because you're dealing with facts that are pretty hard. You're dealing with the law, which is pretty firm. There's not a whole lot of discretion in a Planning Board situation.
Excellent. Any chance we'll see you back here next year?
For what?
Whatever you want.
Well, Jen's trying to recruit me to work here.
Does that mean I should start looking for a job?
Oh, no, 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 hardly, hardly. But, you know, one of the experiments, part of my campaign, was to see, you know, can somebody win a townwide office without spending money? And I guess the answer is probably not. You know, I spent no money. I had a website that my good friend and neighbor, John Sacks, donated. He said he didn't donate it to me. He donated it to the town, because he felt the town deserved to have that type of a campaign. And a lot of people did emails and phone calls and what have you. But we now know the answer. You know, if you want to run for a townwide office, you're probably going to have to spend a few thousand bucks. And that's unfortunate, because that excludes a lot of people, especially young people with kids, that don't have that kind of money that they're going to have to come up with the money to run. We only had this one townwide contested race. And I think that speaks to why a lot of people aren't running. Did you get the results of the marijuana?
We do have the results of the marijuana, yeah.
There will be no marijuana shops in Burlington in the next year or two. That's for sure.
Yeah, so that was a non-binding question, but I do think that the boards will be looking at that to sort of inform any decisions they make on that.
Well, at Town Meeting, many of the people who said, no, we're not going to vote on it. Now, we want to know what the people got to say.
Now we know.
And we know, yeah. It, I thought it was going to be close.
I thought it would be closer.
And this is nowhere near close. And even if they won, it was non-binding. And if you look at our zoning bylaws, there is no place in town under the current zoning bylaw where you can put a retail marijuana shop. So it was going to require significant changes, which requires a two-thirds vote by Town Meeting. It would have been a process. But I'll be interested to see how much money was spent, since I know I was the one who filed a zero-spend report.
Well, those will, those will come out in due time.
Yeah. Well, the final is, what, January, I mean, May 5th or something like that.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah. I've got mine all filled out.
Yeah, you didn't have to, you didn't have to really do much on that paper, that paperwork, did you?
Nothing at all.
Great. Chris, any more questions?
Jack, just anybody you want to shout out, thank? The floor is yours.
Well, thanks for the 18.6% of the electorate who came out and voted or took the time to. And it's more than I expected. We were expecting below 15. I thank, you know, John Sacks, who did that. A number of people did the below-the-radar-type campaign. And I appreciate all that.
Great.
Well, thank you for your continued commitment and service to the town. And I guess I'll see you here on Monday for orientation.
You've already given me two orientations already?
Yeah, but now it's the real orientation. And you get to sit next to my desk, so.
How much does it pay?
Can't tell you that on my TV.
Okay.
Take care, Jack. Thank you.
And we do have results for the, those four precincts. I'm not sure if you can read my scratchings, but.
I think we got a fresh copy.
Oh, good. Oh, that's even better.
Amy, or Nikki, do you have the fresh copy?
Why don't we run through that while we wait for our next guest?
Okay.
All right, so.
Precinct One, Three, Six, and Seven.
All right. So Precinct One, we have Mimi Bix Highland with 319 votes, Michelle Ray Huntoun with 338 votes, Florence Leoni with 319 votes, Gregory Ryan with 302 votes, Maureen Elizabeth Ryan with 346 votes, Shayane, and I apologize if I'm butchering these pronunciations.
Cheyenne Baccacharia.
Cheyenne Baccacharia, 259 votes. Shannon Robinson, 311 votes, and eight write-ins.
So Cheyenne did not make the cut this time, but my suspicion is that since Mr. Gregory Ryan is going to be joining the Planning Board, that Cheyenne will also be a Town Meeting Member. I'm not quite sure how that works, so let me, don't quote me on that one, okay?
All right. And I don't have the Precinct Two one on my copy.
Precinct Two, they were just, I think they were just six candidates, four six spots.
Yeah. So you want to just do the contests first?
I think so.
All right. And that was Three was the second one?
Three was the next one, yes.
Great. So in Three, we have Sean Connors, Chris Hartling, Sharon Laurie, Steve Marin, Brian Pupa, and Martha Simon, who got into their Town Meeting seats. And then Bill McCarthy just missed it by about 10 votes.
And then our next contested precinct, Precinct Five, we had Craig Callahan with 360, Erin Jean Ellis with 357, Phyllis Neufeld with 366, Frank Ursino with 347, Zi Wang with 342, and William Gaffney with 327.
I think we had six for six on that one.
Six for six, yeah, I believe. We had, we had five attorneys, or five incumbents, excuse me, and then William Gaffney from Planning Board making the hop over to Town Meeting.
Okay, so Precinct Six is the next one.
We had eight candidates, yes. Yeah. So Precinct Six, we have Bob Aloysi, Dan Collins, Dan Dottucci Senior, Jim Frazek.
Darrell.
So Darrell and Bill did not get in. Anthony Clark and Matthew Denaro did. So the two candidates who did not make it in, Darrell Interess and Bill Trelligan.
And Precinct Seven is the last one.
So we have Adrian Callahan with 256 votes, Cynthia.
Kazanjin.
Kazanjin, thank you, Nikki, 246.
Helps to know everybody in town.
Carrie Riley with 257, Anthony Salamone with 230, Paul Schwartzman with 225, Daniel Van Camp with 213, and Neil Laspazio with 156.
So Neil didn't quite make it in this time around.
Okay, we have our next guest, Gregory Ryan.
Speaking of Gregory Ryan.
Welcome.
So I won twice tonight.
So, I won twice tonight.
You might be the only candidate on the ballot to win two different races in one. Welcome, congratulations.
Thank you.
How are you, how are you feeling? How are you holding up after standing outside in the, the cold rain for all day long?
Well, I was cold and I was tired and I was wet. I went home and I took a shower and I warmed up at the Ice Palace for my daughter's ice show. So, that's what I've done. That's what I've been doing.
All right, well, and what are you, what are you looking forward to doing on the planning board for the next five years?
Paying attention to the growth of the town. Making sure we don't get out over our skis when we are trying to bring new businesses in the town, paying attention to our residential tax rates, looking at how we can work the accessory dwelling units into our business plan, our model, working on, you know, how can we create more opportunities for less expensive housing in town while always keeping an eye on our residential tax rate? That's the short and sweet of it.
Okay.
You are taking one of the seats that was previously held by Ernie Covino, and I know you both served on zoning bylaw review for a while. What has it been like to work with Ernie throughout the years?
Ernie's a, he's a, he's a great guy. As a matter of fact, the reason why I ran was last March, I was out holding a sign and he said, you know, Greg, I've worked with you on the zoning bylaw review committee. I'm not going to run for reelection. I think you ought to consider running for my seat. I've known Ernie for many years because he's good friends with my in-laws. And so, I've known him, you know, personally for many years and we've worked together on the zoning bylaw review. And he brings a lot of institutional knowledge. And I went to his on Thursday night, it was his last, you know, planning board meeting and him and Bill were, it was both of their last ones. And you sit there and you think about it, Bill was on there for 10 or 12 years and Ernie was on there for 37 years. Jeremy and I just, just won the race. The planning board is losing almost 50 years of institutional knowledge on how these things work. Jeremy and I have our work cut out for us to learn very quickly all of those things that they've had to pay attention to, that they know just by, by experiencing it for the last so many years. So, that's going to be a challenge, is to learn everything that goes along with that position.
No pressure.
No.
No, God, no.
You know, luckily, there are several other planning board members. It's the biggest board in town, right, with seven members?
Yeah, but Ernie's still around here, too.
Right, and yeah, I'm sure you've got him on speed dial.
I do, yes.
I know it's an issue that has come up a lot on the campaign trail over the last few months is question 2 about rescinding the prohibition of marijuana sales. How do you feel about the results of that today?
We voted against it. It's what the town wants or doesn't want, I should say.
People have spoken.
People have spoken.
Anything that you're really looking forward to? What are you excited about for, for getting your time on the planning board?
I'd like to see the mixed use that we, that town meeting just passed in January. I'd like to see that come to fruition. I'd like to see how Nord Blom is presenting and wanting to put a new, an apartment building across from, on Middle 6 Turnpike across from Third Ave, but they've got this concept in where that spot is kind of the midpoint between Wegmans and the mall. And so, if they can make, put the apartment in, I don't know if it's going to go through. I'm just, I'm not even, I'm not plugging for it, but the idea was that they're looking at, to make a little bit of a green space to walk between the mall and Wegmans, having that built out to make it easier for people to traverse that area, to make it a bit more walkable. And I know we've all talked about green space and walkability. That, you know, that's one of the things that I'm looking to see if we can make that work.
Excellent. Anybody you'd like to shout out, thank? The floor is yours.
Oh, boy. Okay, so, Ernie, for starters. I love him or hate him, I'm not quite sure yet because I haven't gotten into this. My campaign committee, you know, you can't do this by yourself. And, you know, Frank and Christine Monaco, Megan Nowichek, my, Ernie, my campaign manager, Mike Hardy, my wife, Maureen, my kids, I had my kids go through our voting list and say, who do you know? So, we're going to, we're going to contact every single one of them. Renee and Dranika, who's, who's, lives over near Wind Street and a whole bunch of people. Couldn't have done it by myself. A lot of people put a lot of work into this.
Well, it seems like it paid off. Congratulations.
We'll see.
See you at the next planning board meeting.
Sounds like a plan.
Stop and by.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Well, I think we have reached the end unless we could, we could read off the uncontested races if you'd like, or we could just put those on the screen.
Sure.
What are you thinking?
It's my decision, okay?
Sure.
Why, let's go over it. Why not?
We've got the numbers.
So, Jennifer Priest, again, ran uncontested for town clerk, 2,430 votes. William Byer, town moderator, 2,425 votes. I do not know what number term this is for Bill.
Four, I believe.
Four, yeah. You want to go over select board?
Yeah, sure, select board.[1666.16]